So I call to order the Select Board meeting Wednesday, September 4th, 2024, 7:30 PM. We're in the Great Hall because we have a, at least one member who's participating remotely. The rules are a little different, so I've got to read through the rest of this agenda, at least the top part of it. So in accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extends the Governor's March 12th, 2020 Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31st, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC, cable television, and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if the live broadcast is live or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. So first, just I want to recognize that there is a quorum of the board present. In the Great Hall, we have Ms. Deborah Roberts, Mr. Scott Carrera, and myself, and remotely we have Lou Gito. And I just wanted to confirm on camera, Mr. Gito, are you able to hear us okay?
I am.
Okay. With the quorum present, I ask all to rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all very much. So we're going to start with Select Board comments, and I'll start with Mr. Gito.
None.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Roberts.
Testing, yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman, and to my fellow board members, I wanted all to know that I will be stepping to the role of President of the Massachusetts Select Board Association. The current president is retiring and moving out of state. I was originally voted in as the first vice president. Now I'm stepping into the role of president. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
That is a huge responsibility, and Massachusetts Select Board Association is in wonderful hands. So thank you for doing that for us, representing us, but also all of Massachusetts. And I'm really looking forward to... You're really good at keeping people busy and getting things done. So hopefully they don't come to regret how much you make them work, but congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Carrera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to read something to get something straightened out that's been bothering me because there's a lot of talk, and I want to show people where I stand, and that's going to be it. I'm not going to mention it again. "I'd like to address an item that is floating and bloating with false info. I did not accept the position on the working group that the town manager put together. The reason is because I am tired of people speaking for me, so no need for me to let this exercise in futility use my name. I'm going to make a statement from my mouth, not the gossip line. In 2021, I was on the Peter Ventresco Show because we were running for selectmen at the time, and Steve remembers, and on that debate, when I stated that I was for a South School, that the parents who were forgotten and deserved a new school in their neighborhood, their district, were left behind. That's why I got back on the board for two items. One item, the South School in their district, not this Mar-a-Lago in the woods, a school for them. The ramifications of the new school is going to upheaval this town. The money is going to be outrageous. But the children, they deserve to be in their own area. So that's what I did. I stood there for two things. I got back on to dissolve the building committee for the fire station. I made the motion for it. Now we have a fire station. The firemen, the firefighters, women and men, they're happy with it. God bless them. That's all I care. But that's why the two reasons I got back on the board. I am not a no vote. The people in this town will vote things when it makes sense. We have a town manager who says he believes in facts and transparency. I got a barrage of calls. I wish I wasn't home. I wish I didn't even go to my garage and answer the stuff that was on my answering machine. Why then was there a 5-0 vote by the SMAC Board of Directors to send cameras to the working group? But I was told by several phone calls that the town manager stopped the cameras from coming and told the station control person not to send them. So I did some checking, and it's true. So this is sad because the residents are interested on both sides, both sides, yes and no. And I'm not a big fan of the word yes and no. We're one town. We're working towards a good product. Either it's going to be this and the people voted in, or it's going to be something else and they voted out. But the bottom line is, there is, like I said, no such thing as a yes or no side. Why divide the town? There was a comment made at the, do I know if it's true or not? Two people told me that there was a comment made, but the school in the South School neighborhood, the people will support that in this town. I'm tired of hearing the pressure of the MSBA. They're nothing but a group that you ask for help from. This town has built schools, several of them. One we got help from, so we couldn't build other schools? Of course they would. We just built a fire station. If we were going to build one school for those children in that area, it would be fine. I asked them to look into that, nobody did. Now all of a sudden, we're going to do the fact-finding mission. I can guarantee you, the data is already stacked up, and it's just an exercise in futility. So I'm just telling you, that's where I stand, and I'm not going to have my name used, that I'm a no vote, because that's not true. That's the end of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrera. So I have no additional comments. Mr. Coulter, do you have any comments? Is this under Town Manager's comments?
Mr. Chairman, I can't tell you how disappointed I am by the previous gentleman's comments, and I hope he allows me the opportunity to address them. The SMAC Board of Directors does not decide where they will video and where they will not video, so that they took a 5-0 vote is very interesting, but it's not relevant to anything. The gentleman has seen the contract. He has signed the contract. He knows they do not assign cameras to anything they choose to assign cameras to. That is the sole responsibility of your town manager and who's serving in that office. So he's 100% correct. A gentleman ordered that those cameras be there behind my back, and I ordered them canceled. Why? There are 14 members of this working group, three of them PhDs, three of them attorneys. The condition under which they would serve as this impartial, independent group to just do fact-finding, and that the gentleman would undermine the integrity of those people who are volunteering this time is disgraceful. I know he's my boss, but it's disgraceful. A condition under which they agreed to serve as this fact-finding group is that it not be videoed, and it's my job to honor that. So why isn't it videoed? This is a thing where people will provide evidence, and this group is charged with challenging the data in order to get to the bottom of the truth, so that in November they can publish a document to the citizens of this town with their name signed to it, that they have done the very best of their ability to find the God's honest truth on every one of these issues. So if the opposition to this working group is that people are opposed to facts and to truth, then bring it on. That the gentleman would call them, I forget what he called them, I'll have to watch it on the film again, and disrespect them in such a way is horrible, Scott. And I'm almost done.
Mr. Coulter, I did not mention one person on that thing, so take that back.
Sir, you identified the group.
I did not.
There's no more back and forth, guys. We can follow up with your comments.
Mr. Chairman, do I still have the floor?
You do, sir.
Thank you. The next point about the MBA has nothing to do with it. I believe that was the quote. They're a group that we just asked for help from. They control it because they're giving us $47 million. They have a say in it. In fact, they have more than a say, they have control over it. We can tell them to just go away with their wheelbarrow full of money. That's the policy of the school committee, and if they do that, we'll respect that. But let's not minimize the impact of the state on whether we can replace two 65-year-old schools. They don't just give us advice and counsel and orders. They show up with a wheelbarrow full of money that we don't have to even remodel those schools. Remodeling them is $50 million apiece. Now, some of that may be new news to the public. The whole purpose of this working group, Scott, is to not take a yea or an aye. They will not make a recommendation on how citizens will vote. They simply will take every piece of data, they'll challenge it, they'll ask for documentation, and they will publish it in an easy, readable document in November so that the people of this town can make an informed decision, whatever that may be. Are we opposed to that? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I know, Mr. Carrera, you wanted to make some additional comments.
I did not malign that board. You told me that it was going to be a 50-50 split, and you haven't found it. There isn't a 50-50 split, and don't tell me there is. And don't accuse me of saying things against good people on there that I know most of them are fair and everything. It's the way it's being done, it's the way it's being hidden. This was done before, and we had nothing to say because it was done with the employees inside the town hall. Not even a selectman could sit in on it. That's what I was told. But I was told that when it's done with citizens of the town, they are not to hide from anything, that it's open. They're supposed to be welcomed in. Anything that should be getting out should be getting out. It shouldn't be, why would we say something and they would find out about it?
Mr. Chairman, I'm very confused over the comments, so I'm not going to debate them, but the group is in place, and mostly professional people or experienced town meeting members. We looked hard and long for people that were opposed to the project, and we've only got two, that would serve on this working group. There are some that accepted, and for whatever reason, two days later, a day later, withdrew. I wonder why. This is a group, and I would invite the gentleman to come sit in on a meeting. Last night, he would have seen a roundtable discussion where the working group worked with the people, the citizens who came to participate, and participated for more than 50% of the time. It's true collaboration, and everybody is welcome. Everybody's invited. I will read a letter at your direction, Mr. Chairman, that I'm putting on Facebook tonight and on the town crier tomorrow, setting up a Facebook page for people to call in and write in questions, with a long-term schedule at the library, 5:30 every Monday night. Nobody is hiding from anybody. I have meetings in that office 12 hours a day, working group meetings. The public doesn't walk in. SMAC doesn't get invited in by Mr. Laurie. It's not hidden from anybody. But that's what this is, a working group. It's not a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen, of the Select Board. It's not a working group appointed by town government. It's a working team, like I have a dozen of them in this town, to try and end the vitriol caused by misinformation. So if I'm guilty of anything, it's trying to get rid of the misinformation that's been spewed here this evening.
Mr. Coulter, would you like to read the letter? I think there's a lot of helpful, especially statutory language that helps illustrate your position.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I sound very frustrated, it's only because I'm very frustrated. I'm getting attacked day and night over a working group that's committed to facts and data for the benefit of these citizens. I can't believe there are citizens that are not committed to the same thing. I'll read it right now. As you all know, I created an independent working group to hear, consider, and vet information regarding the South School project. This group is not a subcommittee of any board. It is a working group of objective residents who share different viewpoints and backgrounds in the community. It includes three PhDs and three attorneys. The working group is tasked with receiving citizens' questions and concerns, and then meeting with subject matter experts to gather, vet, and confirm that information. The working group's mission is fact-driven. It therefore needs to determine what is true and not true, what, based on the facts, is ultimately what is or is not appropriate to publish for our citizens who deserve accurate information. To accomplish that mission, the working group must necessarily be driven by a collaborative group process in order to prepare a comprehensive document and to be published with their names on it in November. Although a working group created by a town manager is not subject to the open meeting law, this working group has welcomed the public to participate at every meeting it has held, which is two. Members of the public have taken full advantage of this approach and have participated so actively that the working group has essentially become a roundtable discussion. For anyone who would like to attend, but who has not, I invite you to do so. The working group has been a model of public participation and transparency. I'm very proud of how well it has engaged the public and how well it has carefully and considerately sifted through this voluminous, complicated, and complex information. I am aware that project opponents have raised concerns about the applicability of the open meeting law. Longstanding and well-established decisions of the courts and the division of open government have held that a working group appointed by a single municipal official, who himself or herself is not subject to the open meeting law, is not a subcommittee of a board and therefore not subject to the open meeting law. And he cited, and we cite, Connolly versus School Committee of Hanover. This working group, oh, excuse me, like every working session I conduct in my office every single day, this working group does not need to post agendas. It does not need to invite the public. It does not need to recognize the public. It does not need to take minutes, and it does not need to record its meetings. Notwithstanding that law, the working group has welcomed the public and encourages their input. Should members of the public wish to submit questions to the working group, please send those questions to ss-south-school-workinggroup@stotin.mass.gov. Your questions will be addressed in the final working document. A subcommittee under the open meeting law and Robert's Rules of Order would simply not be as effective nor as efficient. Video recordings or livestreaming the meetings would be contrary to the mission of the working group because incomplete and potentially inaccurate information would be put out in a public before the working group could perform their task of vetting that information. In any event, per Article 5, Section 3 of the Town's Access Agreement with SMAC, SMAC is only obligated to record Select Board meetings, School Committee meetings, and Town meetings. While the town manager may request that additional meetings be recorded, it is solely within the town's discretion whether to record those meetings or not. I did not make such requests to record that meeting. And I did cancel it, and I will next time as well. The working group will ultimately produce a report. That report will be a public document, which will be posted on the town's website and available for all citizens to see. Again, I am so pleased and proud with how well the working group has engaged the public and how well it has carefully and considerately sifted through this very complicated and significant public project. In my view, it has been a model for public participation and transparency. For anyone who would like to attend, but who has not, I invite you to do so. The meetings are held each Tuesday from 5:30 to 7:00 at the library. All are welcome. Mr. Chairman, I recognize this may be a new approach in Stoughton. It's universally used almost throughout the Commonwealth, to have an independent group vet the facts, and then let the people in the pro and con fight it out, not over the facts, but over what they hope to do for their community, and that's democracy. But to see this community get torn apart over misinformation, contradicting information, information that has been vetted, is so sad to see. Now, do I wish this was done before it was brought to a vote so that people could have voted on information and facts? Yeah, I do. That wasn't my role. That was the role of the building committee. But where it wasn't done, it needs to be done. Our citizens deserve that. And so for anybody to suggest that this is a political group or a group with agenda, the only agenda is fact-finding and documentation. Thank you for allowing me to read that.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the next order of business, which is Citizens' Comments. I think we have a number of people who probably want to speak, so I'm just going to remind people of some of the rules here. This is, I'll start by saying that this is provided by our town council and requires sort of the legal frameworks under which we can operate after a decision called Barron versus Southborough, sometimes referred to as the Right to Be Rude Law. Apparently, somebody who, you know, was asked to stop speaking during public comments pushed it. They ultimately had to stop speaking. I think the board was, I think the chair, I want to say, put the meeting into recess. Well, that was challenged all the way to the Superior Court of Massachusetts. They determined that if you are invited to Citizens' Comments and you're speaking, you have the full protections of the First Amendment and can say whatever you want, and you have that right to be, in this case, rude, as the one lady who brought this to the Supreme Court was accused of. Nevertheless, there are some frameworks under which we can operate. One is, we can determine how long people speak, and there are some additional guidelines that we ask just that people respect. I'm going to read this through, and then I'm going to add one additional comment. So before we begin Citizens' Comments, I'd like to remind everyone of, or state some ground rules for this agenda item, which I, as the chair, would like to just voice as preface before we begin. Citizen's Comments is an opportunity for the board to hear from the public, but shouldn't be a dialogue or debate. I therefore encourage the board members and the town manager to listen to the comments made and make note of those you want to follow up on and/or that warrant further discussion. If it's an item that needs further discussion, I'll put it on the agenda for a future meeting. If it requires follow-up, we can direct the town manager to do so. If the comment doesn't require board discussion at a future meeting or follow-up from the town manager, I'd request that we simply try to say thank you and continue to the next speaker, and then move on to the board's business. I'll try to give everyone the time they need, but we have a full agenda, as we always do, so I'll ask that the speakers limit their comments to three minutes. While public comments are not required to pertain to an agenda item, such comments must pertain to a matter within the public body's jurisdiction. Public comments on matters outside the public body's jurisdiction shall not be permitted. The following comments shall likewise not be permitted: threats incitement to imminent lawless conduct, obscenities, personal attacks, defamatory statements, and sexually explicit statements. I encourage speakers to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to refrain from verbal attacks upon the character or motives of members of town boards or town staff, the citizens of their community, and/or each other. Thanks. Let's proceed with our first speaker. I remind you, you have three minutes. That was the reading, and I will pick people. Everyone's going to have a chance to speak. There's not going to be a limit on that. But I do want to just remind people that one of the statements in here is that the comments do have to pertain to the body's jurisdiction, and there have been comments that we've gotten in the past that simply don't pertain to our jurisdiction. I'm not going to stop anybody from making those comments, but I do want to make sure that you, more than anything, aren't coming to the wrong place, and I might just, after your statements are made, let you know that that is not within our jurisdiction, and if I'm able to point you to the body that actually has that jurisdiction. As an example, things related to the South School, the Select Board has no jurisdiction over the South School. Our only role is to put things on town meeting warrants if asked to, and to call for elections if that's been requested, and we've received no warrants, no articles for any warrants, and we haven't been asked to put anything on a ballot. Nevertheless, as I mentioned, I'll let you speak your minds and respect your comments, but if you want to speak on things that are outside the jurisdiction, it might also be helpful to speak to the bodies that are responsible for those things. In this case, in school-related things, obviously, are the school committee. So we're going to start with, I'm just going to start with Ms. Walsh. I know you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. My first comment is, I hope we don't become Canton, where the selectmen aren't even meeting in person because of the audience disruptions. This is Stoughton. We're not Canton. My other comment is, in the past month or so, Stoughton has lost two very long-term, prominent volunteer citizens to traffic accidents. We've got to come up with a better word than accident. Now, David Souza was killed on a highway that's outside your jurisdiction, but Joe Sores was killed in Stoughton on Central Street. That's within our jurisdiction. We have got to do something about the people that get a driver's license and think it entitles them to run over anything that's in their way, human, automobile, animal, whatever. I know that for the last year or two, we've been told that our police department is understaffed. But school started today. A lot of the people that are being killed in these accidents are older or younger, if you watch the news. There's going to be a lot of kids on the street. Unfortunately, they don't always stay on the sidewalks. My request would be that, if at all possible, that our police officers be out there patrolling before school starts and when school lets out. I know they can't do 24/7, but it's important that as kids are arriving or heading toward the school, and as they're leaving the school especially, we've all seen the behaviors. They're not exactly textbook, but we have to watch out for other human beings, whether they're on bicycles, or scooters, or on the sidewalk, or in a crosswalk. Also, in some communities, periodically, police follow the school bus. I know there's several school bus routes. Maybe they can just alternate them down along the lines. To see the number of people, drivers, that pass a stopped school bus, and there's a few places in town where as many as 20 kids get off and have to cross the highway, I'm thinking of Central Street. I know everyone wants to get where they want to get as fast as possible, but you can't mow down a bunch of kids because they're in your way. And whatever the police department can do, whatever time they can find, to slow down these speeders and make people that pass school buses at least get a ticket and be aware that what they're doing is wrong. Obviously, I've never had a driver's license. My vision has been poor since birth. Obviously, I've never had a driver's license, my vision has been poor since birth, so I witnessed a lot of this. And twice, at least once, when I was a Stoughton school student, I was struck by a car that passed the school bus, because in those days, I was expected to cross Route 27. I'm hoping we don't have that kind of bus stops anymore. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, so I tend to forget the people online, so I apologize to people here, but I just want to make sure if anybody's online, I want to get them first because I always wind up forgetting to include them, and, and I want to make sure that they have a chance to speak. Uh, is there anybody online who would like to, to speak during citizen comments? Okay, so nobody wants to, so let's move here. There's a lot of people, and I apologize if I don't know everyone's names, uh, and but we'll, we'll sort of move from near the front towards the back. I, I see, uh, Mr. Feinberg, uh, so you had your hand up, would you like to come up, just say your name and address?
Ernie Feinberg, Powell Street, Stoughton. I was very disappointed in, um...
Sorry, will you just bring the mic a little bit closer?
Sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
I was very disappointed in the answers I heard about SMAC not being in the working group. He welcomed everyone to come to the, uh, meeting, and I think that's awesome. Some people have to work, so they'll sit there and go on SMAC and read it. Sometimes I can't visit, uh, come to a select board meeting. I'll sit there and watch the select board meeting from home. I think this is something that's important to the people of Stoughton, and he should be doing, um, work on, uh, allowing SMAC to be there. I'd like to read something from one of his letters, if you don't mind. In the town crier in his letter, last paragraph, he says, "I want you to know that openness, transparency, and constituent service are among my core values." I think one of your core values should allow SMAC to, uh, record the, uh, meeting that you were having with the working group. I think that's the, one thing to do for people who can't be there. And basically, that's all I wanted to say, and I want to thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Of course, Mr. Feinberg, thank you so much. Okay, so, uh, and I, 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 Mr. Kirby, I, I don't remember your first name, I apologize.
Robert Kirby, Maplewood Road. This probably is a question, uh, through you to the town manager, Mr. Chairman.
Well, this, this is assistant comment section, there's not a question.
Okay, but what I, I'm looking for, um, is some clarity about the, the scope of the working group.
Sure.
For example, uh, in my experience, most of the people that voted no on the South School, um, project proposition did so with the tax implications in mind. As a, a personal affront, they didn't want to see their taxes increase. But secondly, in the greater framework of the town's budget, um, they're just looking at the, the expenditures we put out and the amount of debt extensions we've accumulated and will accumulate in other substantial projects going forward. So the leverage of the town, uh, in terms of its overall debt and, and its bond rating and everything else, uh, is something that is worrisome. And so, uh, in my conversations with, uh, my constituents in Precinct 6, uh, most people said no that I talked to, I, I, I would say the ratio was 10 to 2 in my, uh, travels, and I went out, um, door to door to talk to people about it. And so, um, this working group seems to me to be tasked with something that should have already been done in the last chapter on preparing this project proposal to the town. And it's, it's not clear to me what's going to be different about this. I know it's a fact-finding expedition, but is there range going to include such things as what other possibility, um, solutions there might be to this, um, South School, um, need? Will they look at things like, um, building a new plant at the South School, um, as Mr. Carrera talked about? Will they look at, um, punting on the project, the, the greater tax implications in light of the coming police station needs, the, uh, the middle school and the other things? I think that most people that I've spoken to, and myself included, feel like this kind of project would be better served once we paid off something like the high school. Why accumulate an enormous amount of debt on, um, an elementary school when we've got to deal with the middle school, which is a greater priority essentially? And, um, we're just borrowing, borrowing, borrowing money when the interest rates are high and looking like they're not gonna come down anytime soon. Um, so, that's, that's it. I just want to understand better the working group's range of options that they're exploring, or are they just set up as kind of like an advocacy group for this particular project and just trying to see if the rationale stands? Because presumably, the group that did it in the first place had a good rationale for their choices about consolidating the schools and all that, and I give them the benefit of the doubt, saying that they had the best interests of the town in mind.
I think we've got it, sorry, your time's up, but...
But that doesn't accord with the greater concerns of the debt right now, the tax implications right now.
Okay, so, Mr. Kirby, just before you go, you, you did ask a number of questions, and those are things we can follow up on. So I, I just wanted to ask the town manager, would you mind just following up, uh, even with a public document that just expresses the, the scope of, of the committee itself?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that opportunity. And to Mr. Kirby's, uh, questions, great questions, I want to be very clear, this is not an advocacy group. It won't advocate for or oppose this school project, that's not its role. It will take all the data that has been previously presented and investigated and dig deep to fully vet it, and then prepare a document that answers all of the questions that our citizens are asking. We had a 23% turnout. 13% of our citizens voted no. Most of our citizens who speak to my office every day said, "We're confused. We don't know whether that's true or that's true." So it's not the committee's job to look for alternatives, to make recommendations, that would sound like advocacy, right? It's to take the information that's available, challenge it, fully vet it, and publish a document in November that provides the citizens, to the best of our ability, true, accurate, defensible, empirical evidence. And let the citizens of Stoughton make an informed decision. We're not gonna advocate for it, we're not gonna oppose it, we're not gonna propose new recommendations.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt, but I want to make sure we're not having a back and forth.
No, I appreciate it.
But, but as far as the, the request for, uh, just a, a scope document that expresses what the, the charge is and, and, uh, what the, uh, deliverable is, is that what you're asking for?
Well, I guess my question was, in, in the, in the great scope of, you know, the town trying to solve this issue, which has to be solved at some point or another, there has been a proposal, this group is just looking to really underscore the viability of this proposal.
We have to, sorry, we have to move on to the next people, but I, if there's a, if there's a specific ask, then, then we'll, we'll follow up with that. But thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, we are gonna try and keep this a little bit tighter, uh, and, and I mean no disrespect, but we, we do have to, to move on. I see, uh, Mr. DeFleese, uh, is here, if you don't mind, just coming up, uh, name and address, and, uh, you'll have, uh, three minutes to say what you would like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, sir.
I just have a, a few questions, I guess.
I apologize, my hearing's very bad, so if you don't mind pulling that a little bit closer to you.
Sorry.
Would you mind pulling the mic a little bit closer? Yeah, thank you very much.
Ed, is that button on, is it green?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's green. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
I had a couple of questions, um, about the, um, this committee. First of all, I just want to kind of correct the town manager. I saw on one of his things on Facebook where, um, he intimated that it was a very small vote that voted on the issue back, uh, a few months ago. But in fact, as anybody that's lived in this town for any period of time, we probably averaged less than 1,900 votes on these types of elections. My point is, this was a big turnout, as turnout's going in the town of Stoughton. So I just wanted to, uh, make people aware of that, and I think anybody would tell you that over time, that's pretty much what has happened. So I would like to, um, I would like to ask a few questions about the, uh, the committee.
I don't want to, I'm just gonna pause this for a second. Uh, we won't be answering your questions here. If you'd like to ask them and have a follow-up, we can do that, uh, but we're not gonna have a back and forth answering questions. But if you'd like to ask them and we can follow up with you, we'd be happy to.
What do you mean by follow-up?
Uh, we're not gonna have a debate where we're gonna ask questions and then somebody answers them. You're welcome to make comments of whatever sort you want, uh, but we're not, that's, first of all, this isn't, if it's about the working group, it hasn't, it's not in our jurisdiction. We don't know anything about it, it's not part of our job. So if you want to discuss that, I'm not gonna be able to answer you because I have no idea what the answers are. The town manager might be able to, but that's not really the, the work of this board, and so it's not appropriate to be discussing it during this board's time. But if you'd like to take your time to ask questions, then somebody can follow up with you at some point.
Okay, so I, I'm not to ask questions about the committee, like the amount of people that are on it, uh, I'm really concerned, over time, when we've had these committees, we don't ever seem to have people that are in the trades. These are the people that put these projects and buildings together, and they know how to do it, and we don't recognize that. We have people on committees that, you know, have great ideas, but can they read a blueprint? Probably not. I mean, I know there's some very intelligent people, as we've heard. Um, just as, as an example, and it troubles me that every time we set up committees, these people aren't represented that could tell us a lot about, uh, perhaps how the project should be done. The other thing, one of the big things I was wondering, actually, was if there are, let me back up a little bit. As I see it, the, this whole issue, and I don't know what kind of facts they're looking for, but as I see it, this whole issue came down to cost. It didn't come down to anybody that did not want the school. I think that everybody, or any, most of everybody that voted no, it wasn't a no against the children of this town in Stoughton, it was the price, the cost. In my opinion, this school, this committee should be doing something very simple. They should be looking at the cost and how they can reduce the cost. And I don't mean like, you know, a couple thousand dollars, I mean, maybe a few million dollars. And I don't know if the committee is looking at that, it doesn't sound that way. So I, I, again, I think it's just, it's so simple, you don't need 20 people looking at this. How do we reduce the cost? Because that's the problem. If you put it to another vote, people are gonna be pissed off, for one, that they voted on something in less than a year, people think it can be reversed. That's not right. And the other thing is, the...
Sorry, your time is up, so this is last statement, finish up your sentence.
Yeah, thank you. So, I think, again, I think it's so simple, just find out how you can reduce the cost, and then I think everybody's gonna vote for it. It's, the taxes are killing us. They are killing us, we've got too much going, as the previous speaker said. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, I see David Lurie's hand is up. Great to see you, please, uh, just give us your name and address.
Yes, David Lurie, 18 Robinette Road. I was not gonna plan to come up at all, I was just gonna sit and, and watch. Uh, my name came up, and there was some misinformation about me somehow having the authority to send cameras into a working group, and I don't have that authority. I do work on the Stoughton Media Access Corporation, SMAC, as one member of a board of five. Okay, so I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I did not have the sole authority to be able to send in cameras to watch anything. Okay? The other thing that I think is interesting is, is we just had a contract ratified and a lot was discussed about whether we have open meeting law obligations. Turns out, we don't have any. We're a private corporation. So all the discussion around open meeting law does not pertain to the Stoughton Media Access Corporation at all. So, all of that's moot. And the thing that I think that, I think is misunderstood about SMAC is that while we don't have to do the things that are beyond what we have the agreement with you, we do have a responsibility to the First Amendment to express ourselves and express the opinions and thoughts of others who want to use the studio and equipment to get their message out. We have a, we have a United States Constitution, that's what we answer to, not, not this, not anything that was cited as somehow relevant to things that we can or can't do in the town. As far as like, why I think it's important to have a camera in the room, I think, you know, it's funny, we talk about the children at the elementary school age. Myself and I think my kids growing up, they played a game called telephone. You know, the interesting thing, there's only one thing worse than not having, uh, cameras, or one thing that's worse than having cameras in a room like that, is not having them when you could have a few people come witness it, and then they whisper to somebody, "Did you hear what was said?" "Oh, no, I didn't go to the meeting, what was said?" And then they tell somebody, and they tell somebody, and they tell somebody, and then by the end of the line, it doesn't sound anything like what actually happened. That's why you put it on record, so everybody can see plainly themselves, straight from the horse's mouth, what somebody thought was important to say at the meeting. That's why we do it. It's a First Amendment thing, and we have the jurisdiction to go to public places, to see things in public as they were at the library for the working group. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, we can follow up afterwards, if that's okay?
Say a yes or no question?
Sure.
If you'll indulge me. Mr. Lurie? Did the SMAC board of directors take a 5 unanimous vote, 5-nothing vote, to send a film crew to the library last night?
Yeah, I'd rather not have a back and forth.
Yes or no question?
I'd rather, you know, we're gonna move on.
Mr. Chair, I'm only here to talk about me, my name came up as an individual and one person on a board, and I don't have the authority to send in cameras.
Fair enough.
If anybody wants to come to our meetings, and I recommend, by the way, now that it came up, I recommend that people who care about the First Amendment to come to the SMAC board, uh, meetings. There'll be coming up, there'll be one this month.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, so, we still have some more hands up, and I apologize. I, I see, uh, Ms. Rosenblatt has her hand up. Thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Not yet, just press the button, there you go. Okay, better?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Um, with all due respect, I just want to say that the whole purpose for forming this working group was to inform the public, so how does not recording it make any sense? It just seems disingenuous, it seems contradictory, and I'd like to know what the opposition is to being recorded. I did hear one mention of people who are in, there that don't want to be recorded. Well, then they shouldn't be in the group. Transparency should supersede their wishes, and there's no logical reason that I can think of, so I'd like to know what the opposition is. And if people want to be on this group, I already said that, so they should just either not be on the group because we have to have transparency, that has to come first. And we feel eviscerated for merely asking for transparency. First, we have a vote and we speak our mind, and then the will of the people is just ignored. Then when we say we want transparency, we're told we have it, we don't have it, and we need to have it, and this is why this is getting worse and getting out of hand. And this is why this is getting worse and getting out of hand. What is the opposition to having this be recorded? I would think you'd want to have that. The other factor is, a lot of people are saying this is a one-sided, biased group that just has people on there that just spew one ideation. And I feel that to be the case myself. I could go on as to why I feel that way, but I won't, I won't go off on a tangent. If you really want to show transparency, you really want to be magnanimous, you really want to truly get to the heart of this, then you should have people from both sides of the aisle on there. But that's purposely not being done, and that's not right. And that's just, it's just perpetuating the problem. And I wish you had not even gone to the, to the point of having a second vote, because that's really exacerbating the problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who else do we have? All the way in the back, sorry, that's you, yep, standing up. Come join us. Great to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Rachel Lazarus. Is this on? No, okay. Okay, I'm pretty loud anyway. So, hi, my name is Rachel Lazarus. I live at 25 Jordan Drive. I am excited to see that the South School Working Group is being discussed. I would like to say that as a person who can both read the cost-benefit analysis that went into the South, the new proposed building, and can read a blueprint, a lot of the things that people are worried about, about it being too cost, about having a lot of bloat, really aren't true. I believe there's been a lot of misinformation, some of it deliberately spread around this town. One thing that I don't think people are taking into consideration is that, given the NA PC grant, we were essentially handed a 40% off coupon. The school we are getting, the school that we have proposed, we would be getting for 40% off. Any other building, and that would include the smaller buildings that people have proposed that would not actually suit our current needs as a town, would actually be far more expensive. We would be paying more money for less. If you want your taxes low, you've got to go when you have the 40% discount. I don't understand why people have not looked at all of the information. One of the things that has been very influential in why I support this new building, I am not part of the working group, is because I learned that the South Elementary School is a fifth of the size of the new high school, but the utilities that we pay every year for this tiny elementary school are five times the amount that we pay for utilities at the high school. That is a major cost savings. Sometimes you have to spend a little money upfront, and the savings will go on for decades afterwards. There has not been a new elementary school built in this town since 1971. That's the Gibbons where my children attend. My children personally will not benefit from a new elementary school, but the children of Stoughton will, the people of Stoughton will. And people are ignoring the opportunity costs and assuming that not doing anything will be the cheaper method, or rehashing the two-year-long process that has already gone on is going to be the cheaper method. The work has been done. The work, people are taking into consideration, the comments that people have made, they're cutting when they can. But really, this was a very well-designed plan, and I invite people to read it for themselves, or if they need a summary, I think the working group would be a great place to do that. There is so much misinformation going out there, some of it is being spread deliberately. That is not fair to the citizens of this town. There was so much misinformation before the vote, and people did not have the ability to have an informed vote because people were lied to. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, I know we still have a couple more hands up. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. I'm not going to read this statement because a lot of the stuff's been already said, but this corner office here is always preaching transparency, which I don't think he really believes in it. Because the last time I was here, in the end of June, I asked for listed names that are on this group. Because I says, I don't think there's going to be any no people, it's going to be yes people. So the whole thing is going to be a farce. And I say that because some of the people that I heard that are on there are on some other committees, and when there's a person that has a different point of view, they wouldn't let that person join the group, they'd kick the person out. So this is the same, a lot of the same people are in this group, so it's not going to be a pro and con conversation. So the whole thing is a sham, it's just a waste of time. Now, he didn't want the cameras in there to be filmed, because people watching it are going to misinterpret the information, then there's wrong information going out there. But then, on the next sentence, he's saying, "You invite people, the public, to come in there, or to send in questions." How are people going to send in questions? Most people don't even know this thing exists, only because people started complaining about this group, that there's all yes people on the group. So, so there's no transparency. I mean, if the people are going to get the wrong idea watching on TV, then what's stopping a person that's going there to listen to that meeting, interpret it the same way? So it's one or the other. It's going to be the same result. So the whole thing is just, it doesn't make sense. And the follow-up on Mr. D. Felice's question about building cheaper schools? Yes. Schools can be done cheaper. Like, the high school over here could have been done for millions and millions of dollars cheaper. Even a simple thing like a house. If you, let's say, raise ranch, you want the front entrance to be bumped out, you're going to pay double for that little bump out. But if you ran it, the wall, the foundation straight, and let the, the entrance be in, you save money. That high school has a million bump outs and a million inverts into the building. It, it's just ridiculous. That drives the price up by millions and millions of dollars. And this new South School is the same thing. It's a big waste of money. People are going to say, "Oh, look at our beautiful school," but it doesn't do anything for the education. You could spend 150 million, or 75 million, the quality of education is the same. The thing is to build a plain school like Brockton done a few years back, and I'm going to give you an example of Attleboro, Massachusetts. Their high school, they've got a gigantic high school, it cost them $250 million. The building is a big building, I know it's four or five stories high, and it's a long rectangle building, the sides are straight walls, the back is a straight wall, the front's a straight wall with a couple little bump outs just to break up the wall, not that the foundations are bumping out. So that keeps the cost down, so they can spend more money on the inside. If we, in this town, were to build that same school, you know what it would cost us? 500 million, doubled, because we've got to build these elaborate Taj Mahal that make no sense. No town that's right mine, that wants to run a tight budget, will build a school like this, or the high school that we built. And there's all kinds of trouble down there for good high school, and nobody's worried about that. And we're going to be spending money at times to come to get down there, so...
Your time is up. Could you please wrap up? Just give us your...
Yeah, all right. I've got a little more to say to keep the cost down, but Eddie was right. You've got to get people in here to know what the hell they're talking about. Okay. A new town vote might bring out more voters, but they're going to be an angry, and the angry group, it might, it'll end up losing by a bigger margin. Now, redesign the new South School that can be, that we can afford, and the quality of education will be the same. Now...
Sir, your time, your time is up. It's time, time to wrap up your comments.
What?
Your, your time has ended.
Well, I just want to say more, one thing.
Sure.
You keep aggravating the people in this town. There's already talk out there for recalls, not just for this board of selectmen, but for the school committee. And somebody in this room has a lot of favor of recalls. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, see Mrs. Lyons? Thanks for joining us.
Good evening. Lisa Lyons, Precinct 2. So, I want to say out of the gate, in the interest of unity in this town, I truly believe all the citizens of this town want the very best for Stoughton, and they want the very best of everything. That being said, we cannot have a town official disparaging a significant portion of the taxpayers by ignoring the will of the taxpayer and by forming a group that goes against the vote of the taxpayers with the assumption that the taxpayers didn't know what they were voting for. The taxpayers realize that this town has been doing haphazard projects over and over again with zero plans to save. They just see their town officials blowing up their budget for project over project. Now, to address the expert situation, I think my previous speaker spoke that well in terms of, in the trades, okay? You cannot, you cannot ignore the will of the voters and say you're transparent, or to use Mr. Coulter's letter that was read here tonight, about, "We have objective residents on this working committee." This is not objective, and whose opinion is it? It's his opinion. We do not, while we do have a strong manager type of manager in this town, it doesn't mean he can be dictatorial. And he, that is why, and this is meant from my heart, to explain to you why people are upset. It is a complete disregard. You were insinuating that people were giving out misinformation, or worse, a previous speaker saying people lied. There were no lies from the no side of the equation. In fact, there were things put out from the other side that was misleading. And, and it is an utter disregard and a disrespect for the taxpayers. And to have an, a town manager have an outburst at a select board member who has every right to be frustrated and express himself in a very professional manner, should never have a town manager have these outbursts. And he's had many, and he has misspoken. I went to the first meeting just to see who attended, and there was a lie said there. And we cannot have that in this town. It's very disruptive, and it's disrespectful to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was good timing.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't know if you have any, but welcome, and thanks for joining us tonight. If you don't mind just saying your name and address.
Um, yes, my name is John Dino from West Street in Stoughton, I mean, Precinct 4.
Thank you.
I have two questions, and I apologize, I'm a little new to this.
That's okay.
Uh, my question is, was there a committee already made before we went for this initial vote? And where we voted as the town for a no, if they did not accept it, do they get to redo it and to make it favorable for themselves for a yes? That's kind of my question.
Yeah, so this is an opportunity to make comments, but we don't, we don't have a question and answer. It's not, not an interview with the board. Also, it's out of our jurisdiction, so we wouldn't even have necessarily answers to these questions. But, but we can follow up with you and lead you to the people who can give you those answers.
That would be great. I just, you know, because I'm not against anything, I just want, I want to know, I want to be informed, and I thought initially I was informed, and so I went to the poll to vote, and if the town had voted for a no, I figured that would stay, but it seems like a no was not good enough, that they're redoing this, so I just wanted to know why. So thank you so much.
Of course, yeah, we'll follow up with you. Are there any other comments? If you mind just giving your, your name and address?
Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity. So Marina Ryans...
Look, sorry, can we use your name and address, please?
Yes. Marina Ryans, 72 Copperwood.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to emphasize again that the importance of videotaping or doing Zoom meetings for the working group is important. We've talked a lot today about democracy, about confusion, about the whole situation. So to minimize it, we need to have this record, recording. I have my neighbors who had a lot of questions about what's going on with South School, and I couldn't explain it to them, and I couldn't even reference where to go, where to see any documentations, any references, any videos. And I did mention to them that there is a working group, so they want to see everything that is going on in there, so they can see for themselves, they can attend the meeting, they can make their own determination, they can make their own decisions, so we don't run around, create gossips. This is transparency, this is democracy. If you refuse to videotape it, then the working group should not exist. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else? So I think we've gotten through all of the comments. I do want to offer members of the board an opportunity to, to make any follow-up comments they want to make. Mr. Jito, do you have any follow-ups?
I have a lot of thoughts. I have no comments.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Roberts?
I have a lot of comments, but I don't think time permits. So I'll take a pass until the issue comes for the select board. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Carrera?
Just, just one comment, that I read what I've read was mostly for me, and what's being lied about and said about in the attacks that are being put out by certain people that said, "I am a no vote." And I cleared it up tonight, and I'm sorry that somebody took it a little wrong, but there was no maligning of anybody, and I didn't. Sorry to say.
Thank you very much. I do have one additional comment that I'll offer the town manager an opportunity to as well. I, I believe very much in offering people the opportunity to make comments during our citizen comments, and they're not going away, they're going to continue on. But we've been listening to citizen comments for about 45 minutes, and not, I don't believe there was a single item that was actually within the jurisdiction of this board. We don't decide the size of the building, the cost of a school. We have no involvement in a working group that, that is set up by the town manager. We simply don't have anything to, to add to the conversation, and I want people to be able to speak freely. But, but at the same time, we don't have a lot of time to do our work, and if we're listening about things that, that are outside of our scope of our, our, our jobs here, then that will impact the, the rest of the work that we have to do. I do ask that, that if, if you have issues with the schools, that you go to the school committee. If you have issues with the, the, the way the, the South School is being decided, the South School Building Committee would be a good place to go, and the school committee. There are other places, or if there's an issue with this working group, phone calls or emails to the town manager would be more, perhaps more appropriate. As I mentioned, I'm not changing anything, no, there's no more, the citizen comments has ended. But there's, we're going to continue doing this. Everyone's welcome to say anything they want to say. We're not going to stop that. But I, I do want to just ask respectfully that you acknowledge the fact that, that we don't actually have any role in this for the time being. So, Mr. Coulter, if there's anything... No, sir, this is not a public meeting, you're not part of the public body? You're not part of the public body? Okay. We're going to take a five-minute recess. So I'm going to call to order again the select board meeting. It's 8:50. We are going to just continue with our, with the comments that we had, and I just wanted to offer the town manager an opportunity, if you had any additional comments, to feel free to make those now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify some things, although I guess they've moved on, is a couple of things. This working group is not charged with redesigning the project. That is the work of the School Building Committee. We have no standing with respect to redesign. Our job is to help present, articulate, in clear terms, what data we currently have. The second thing, and I'm going to keep this brief, I wish the lady, gentle lady was still here, because I, I, when we speak about respect, it goes two ways. I think this board should know that that gentle lady barged into a department head's office today demanding information, and became irate and was asked to leave the building. Respect goes both ways. I just think the public should know that. I just think the public should know that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comments. Let's move on to the next order of business. Uh, that is, um, a water abatement application request, uh, for a hearing. This is for Annie Batista, 854 Washington Street. Uh, it's great to see you. Uh, so if you'll come up and join us, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll start this hearing.
Good evening.
We also have members of the Water Department.
You can sit there, Karen.
Yeah, right now. We'll come back around, but I'd just like to hear from the applicant, uh, about the water abatement that you're requesting.
Annie Batista, 854 Washington Street. And this is my son, Jay.
Jay Santana, 854 Washington Street as well.
Um, the reason that I, um, the request and, and amendment was because I feel the, the bill was extremely higher, um, because in 2023, it was reasonable and I was able to pay after, um, at the end of 2023, which was in December, as this moment, I haven't been able to catch up, uh, because as you can see in the bill is, is extremely outrageous.
Thank you very much. Um, so you just feel like the bill, this particular bill was, was especially large?
Yes.
And you're asking for an abatement on this? Uh, so I'll just start with, uh, the, what you're billed on is the water that went through your meter. So, uh, is, is, because the bill was large, I can appreciate that might be shocking, but the water nevertheless went through your meter. So are you suggesting that it didn't go through the meter, that the meter's broken or that it's, you know, for, under what basis would you say that you shouldn't be paying for the water that went through your meter?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
So I, I certainly understand what, what you say, obviously, water that passes through is what you would be billed for or charged for. Um, and it's not saying that that didn't happen, that, that if that's the case, that obviously, then obviously we would pay for it or it would be paid for there. Um, but what seems to be is that the bill was about three to four times the amount that was normally charged, even in the past, if you look back in, in let's say a, a two-year period. There was only one time, and that was roughly, if I'm not mistaken, around the summertime, um, where you obviously tend to use more water in, in that timeframe, especially with the, you know, pools or anything like that. Um, this specific time that we requested this abatement, uh, there was no additional water usage, there was no pool put up or anything like, like that, there was no irrigation, we don't have irrigation or anything like that, there was no planting or, um, you know, water use for the, for the flowers or anything of that sort. Um, but the water bill still obviously was a larger bill, like I said, anywhere from about three to four times the amount if you look at the, um, timeframe there. Um, we did also have the, a gentleman from the, I believe it's DPW come in, changed the meter there. Um, and to his knowledge as well, he said that there was nothing, no leaks or anything like that, which was what they had requested. They said, you know, come on down, we can change the meter and he can obviously expect it to make sure that there were no leaks or anything faulty in the system there.
With the meter itself, right?
Correct, yeah. So he installed the new meter in there, um, and everything seemed to be fine. Um, but obviously he did not see any sort of, um, increase in, in, or any sort of leakage in the entire, um, properties or so. Um, and he also at least commented that there was, it definitely very, very well seemed that there was something wrong with that bill there, which led us to believe that we would obviously go ahead and file an abatement there.
Thank you very much. Is there any other, just, we'll kind of have a bunch of back and forth, but is there anything else you'd like to add just before we, we move on to the, to the Water Department?
The only thing that I can say is, um, from the letter that we obviously received back, um, and, and I can agree obviously with the policy, I understood that after the fact, obviously I didn't realize it from the beginning. Um, but obviously the policy or one of the policy rules states that, um, an abatement cannot be put out or an abatement cannot be requested after 45 days, um, from the date of the bill or something along those lines there. Um, and I definitely understood their remarks in that it was past that date, um, so I can certainly understand that regard there. Um, but we're obviously just trying to, one, be heard and two, obviously just acknowledge that there was some, some wrongdoing somewhere. We just want to make sure that it's, it's being dealt with. I mean, we've obviously heard through many other folks through the town, uh, whether it be directly or indirectly through Facebook and things like that, that many water bills have crept up, um, on a lot of folks.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Uh, so we have members of the Water Department, we might just introducing yourselves, you have a microphone? Uh, introducing yourselves and, uh, and, um, let us know what your findings are.
Karen Brown, Water Department.
Keith Nastaja, Waters Department.
Thank you very much for joining us. So from the town side is, what, from, from the Water Department's perspective, uh, what are your findings on, on this?
All right, um, well, first of all, just through policy, um, you know, the resident's correct request was made after 45 days and that's, uh, part of the abatement policy. Um, second of all, um, uh, the, the resident, um, you know, if they can't determine the cause, they're required to hire a plumber and the resident didn't do that. Um, the abatement request determination was made by the superintendent, the previous superintendent, within the 20 days, so it was timely manner on the appeal, uh, which he denied. And now, uh, they're before the water commissioners, um, at this request. The, uh, the new meter that was put in, they're, uh, they're smart, uh, not to be sarcastic, intelligent meters and, uh, we can get daily consumptions. We have, um, 10 days in July showing of intermittent use and then 11 days of continued use. That's assigned as there's a leak, right? It's continual water usage. In August, we have 19 days of intermittent use, two days of continued use and then 11 days showing normal usage where there's stops. And then now, just for today, uh, we did, uh, you know, a, a look back on it. At midnight, there's usage, 1 o'clock in the morning, there's usage, 2:00 AM, there's more usage, 3:00 AM, there's usage, 4:00 AM, there's usage, then there's a stop at 5:00 AM and 6:00 AM, there's a lot of usage. So there's something going on in, in their house, you know, I don't know what's going on, but there is usage on a continuous basis that goes on there. It's, it's a two-family house, um, with, uh, with a lot of residents.
I appreciate that. Uh, so one of the things that, so I'm, I'm looking at a copy of the, uh, the, the customer transaction summary. I'm going to move on to the rest of the board in just, just a moment, but I just kind of want to set the, sort of set the facts straight. Um, I just want to look at, when I look at that, there's a couple of things that stand out, but I'll start with one of the, the least interesting, but also something I'd like to know, just understand. There's a column that's, that's labeled, uh, reading and it, and it has a variety of numbers until you get to, uh, the date of 5/14/2024 where it has a reading of zero. I was wondering, was that when the new meter was, was, uh, switched?
Correct.
Okay. Um, okay, so I would like to just move the, to the room for the rest of the board, offer people an opportunity to ask questions. I'll start with, uh, Mr. Carrera.
Were you in here before, ma'am?
My, no.
No.
This is my first time.
The, the tough thing is there is usage and they, and they told you to get a plumber. Did you get a plumber and, and, and verify anything yet or?
We did get, uh, one of the, the DPW person. Is that correct? No, uh, no, no, we did not get a plumber.
But they did tell you to get one, right?
Um, they did. Yes, they did.
That kind of answers the question. If you were that concerned, you should have had a plumber look and see what's going on. Because what, what Keith says troubles me that there's that much water going on constantly.
Yeah.
And that's what's going to drive it. I mean, the Neptune, Neptune meters are pretty bulletproof.
If, if I may speak on, on that there, um, I, I can say that, um, obviously we did not get a plumber, which like you said, we obviously should have, especially at their suggestion. Um, one of the things that I do know, obviously, like you said, the Neptune meter is a smart meter, which like they said, is, is intuitive, it tells you exactly what's happening between certain hours, et cetera. Um, one thing that I do want to point out, not to, I don't want to point fingers or fault anything, anything of that sort, um, what we were made aware of is that when that meter is installed, if there is a inconsistent reading such as what they're getting, you would be notified of these things, um, you know, especially if it's like, if you're getting a reading, you know, between one and two and you usually would be sleeping at that time or so, we're going to go ahead and, and, and obviously consistently as well. If it's just a one-time thing, whatever, we'll leave it alone. But if it's consistently happening every day or every other day or so, you would be told, hey, Mr. Mrs., these things are happening at the home, uh, we, you should go ahead and get somebody to come out and take a look at that. Um, but we have yet to have never heard any of that done at any point since these meters have been put in. Now, obviously the concern that we're having is prior to the meters being replaced, um, but obviously, you know, we can't speak on whether something was happening before or after, whatever the case is. Obviously, right now, I can certainly agree with the readings, I will not deny that. The readings are, if they're saying that there's something's happening, then we will definitely look into getting a plumber and understand that that's, we can deal with everything from the date that it was placed in May till now. But the abatement was obviously for prior to that. Um, and if there was some sort of leak or so, um, that leak should have been occurring for much longer timeframe as well.
I would actually just like to follow up very quickly. I, I've got the policy in front of me and, uh, one of the conditions of, of an abatement, uh, abatement guidelines, number four, uh, in the event of high consumption due to, to a leak, customers are required to, required to hire a licensed plumber to assist in determining the cause and locating, location of the leak. Proof of repair by the licensed plumber, uh, must be attached to the abatement form. If a leak is confirmed, and this is underlined, if a leak is confirmed, customer may qualify for an abatement of 50% of the water usage and 50% of the sewer usage, uh, above higher normal consumption measured by a two-year period. So, uh, it's not just like a recommendation, it's like a requirement of, of receiving an abatement when you have signs of a leak, that you have somebody check it out. The, um, uh, we can get more into this and obviously we can, we can, um, there's things we can bend, there's things we can't bend, but I want, it, it is, goes beyond just a recommendation. Uh, Mr. Carrera, do you have additional questions?
No.
No, I'm all, I'm all set.
What's the total abatement they're looking for, Karen? Do you, do you have that number?
No, I don't have it.
I noticed there was like in 21, there was almost a matched number of usage, 24. That...
During what period?
Um, you had 12,200 in usage and then in, uh, 2/13/24, like it's the charge, it was from 12/26 to in 23, another 1,200 and 12,400. That's a lot of water. And, and the meter's checked out, right?
Now, just, just to ask, the first one you said in 21?
Yeah.
Uh, that was, uh, November, you said?
Well, yeah.
And would that have been from what date to what date? Is that like August to November or so?
Previous billing was, uh, 8/17/2021 through 11/16/2021.
Okay.
So very late summer, essentially, basically the fall. Do you have any further questions?
No.
Okay. Ms. Roberts?
I would suggest that the owners get a copy of the customer transaction summary. You probably received it before tonight, but if you could take a look at it right now, yeah, and you see the, the November 16th, 2021 with the usage being 12,200?
Uh, as of right now, the, the one that we did was actually just, uh, 2023 to, to the current date, so I don't have anything prior to that, in, in front of me at least.
Prior to year 2023?
Correct.
Okay. Because we're looking at one that's August 17th, 2021 to present.
Yeah.
And you don't have this information.
I, I, not in front of me at least, but I believe.
I just wanted to make sure we're, uh, you can see what we're asking about.
Yes, I, I do have it on, on the...
Oh, okay.
Yep, I do. Sorry about that. So which, which one you said? November 16/21?
Yes, please. That's the usage of 12,200?
Correct, yes. So, and what was said at the time being, um, between, I haven't had looked at that and, um, I know I had spoken to, uh, Ms. Brown as well, if you look just, you know, obviously keeps going back to that date timeframe, um, and seeing that uses there of 12,000 plus, but then you see for a number of months before that and obviously a number of months after that as well, that everything has been between 3,000 and 43, oh, sorry, 3,000 and 5,000.
Right.
Um, usage. Um, but then again, all of a sudden, you know, the meter now jumps up tremendously from, you know, even 5,000 up to 12,000, that's almost two and a half times the amount of usage there. Um, and that, that was basically our concern is that there was a huge jump. Um, and then immediately after that, you can also see that, that that number went from 12,400 down, back down to 24 and to almost 35 again. So our concern there was what happened, you know, how come the, the usage was so normal for so long? And then all of a sudden it jumps up, it spikes up and then comes back down again. So that was, that was our concern there is more, um, are, are we being charged for, again, for water that came through the unit but didn't come through the unit? Um, or is there additional charges for something, um, more concerning or so?
Can I have a second? I guess this is for, for Karen and your, your colleague. Is there any other explanation or logical or viable explanation why for those periods of time, there would have this blip? If it, if the, it was the water actually going through the pipe to the house, is there any other, um, explanation? Can you think of? That's viable explanation?
Viable explanation would be, you know, it's usually a plumbing fixture, usually a toilet, low flow, low running toilet, flappers are stuck, people, you can't even see it with your, with the eye. You know, we, we give out, uh, uh, you know, I call it food coloring, you do, do the food coloring test, put it, put it in the tank and it turns a bowl of different color. There's, there's, there's all sorts of little things you can do in the house. But with the new meters that, that we're installing now, they, they, they're pinpoint accurate and they will, they'll, they will tell you consumption reports on an hourly basis. The older style meters, you know, they don't, they just record the consumption that's going on, you know, uh, through the meter reads. They don't, uh, communicate to us, uh, electronically like they do in... they do now, or radio waves. But it's just, it's usually when you see consumption like this, nine out of 10 times, it's, it's a fixture that's stuck, low leak. Sometimes a garden bib hose, you know, on the house is leaking, people don't notice it after a while. I'm not saying that's what theirs is, but, you know, my years of doing this work, that's what it usually comes across to.
So I, my first concern is, okay, we work out an arrangement, okay? Let's say we go in that direction. But then there's another blip, and that means we still haven't identified the problem, so it's likely to reoccur. And that's why my second question was, is it beneficial to you to get a plumber? I would say yes.
I, I can definitely agree with, with both, with both parties that I think that's definitely our next step. We will certainly get a plumber for sure. I can certainly say that to what the gentleman just said, you know, the, the food coloring idea, I did try that. And I also know that the gentleman at the DPW essentially did the same thing as well, left it there for hours and didn't occur anything there. Of course, it could be a leak from somewhere else. That's just obviously one unit there. Like you said, it could be a, a water spigot, a pipe somewhere else that we're not seeing or so. But I know that there was an, an initial test and didn't find anything, because that's usually the most common that we've heard. But I definitely do agree that we will be seeking a plumber for a professional opinion to see what is occurring there. And if they find, if they do find something, to obviously repair it. And if not, then, you know, move on to the next steps from there, so.
Any further questions?
No, defer to Mr. Carrera. I see you have a question.
How many units in this place?
Two.
Two, two units, yes.
I'd like to give Mr. Gino a chance to ask some questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Gino, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I have several.
Floor is yours, sir.
Do you live in this house?
I myself do, yes. I'm on the second floor and my mother's on the first floor.
So those are the two units?
Yes, that's correct.
So you're in control of all of the water that comes through this into your house?
I would like to say yes.
Is there anybody else that would, would be sneaking in and taking water from?
I, I would hope not, at least.
Okay, that's where I was too. When I look at, at your readings, I see in 2021, 5,700 usage and then 22,200. And in 2023, I see 5,000 and then 20, I mean, 12,400. That looks like a pattern to me, and I don't know what that pattern might be. And quite frankly, I'm, I'm not sure that, that it's important for me to know that. What I do know is that, that what I've heard is that, that you have had a leak at one point or another and haven't dealt with, with a plumber, that you, you have a balance that in the last two years has climbed by somewhere around $12,000, from 41,000 to 53, or almost 53,400. And I'm wondering, I, I guess I would ask the town manager, who is paying for the water that these people are using?
Looks like Tom has stepped away. Sorry, I apologize. The town manager stepped away. We, we'll ask the superintendent, Mr. Anastasia.
Well, no, I, I think I can answer the question.
Okay.
It means that the other ratepayers are paying for that.
Correct, yes.
And I'm wondering whether or not we are collecting any money on interest for that balance, whether it is part of a, a charge against the property, or whether or not we're just turning a blind eye to doing this. And should everybody do this?
So to answer that question, on this transaction list that you're seeing is just the charges of the bills. It's not a full history. It doesn't show their payments. It doesn't show anything like that.
What it shows is a balance. Is that a balance?
That is...
Or is that just a total amount charge?
No, that is the history for this property from day one of this property. This was just to show all of the charges. If I did a report that showed charges, payments, interest penalties, it would all be on there. He, the balance on this is not anything to do with the charges on this. This is not a correct balance by any means. It's just usage.
So it's not a balance at all?
No, just, it's not a balance report. It's just a, a charge and a usage report.
Then perhaps it should be labeled as such.
Well, it's a transaction summary. It's just transactions. Mr. Gino, do you have any further questions?
To get back to the issue itself, you know, it seems to me that the pattern is every couple of years, we have usage of 5,700 and 12,200 and 5,000 and 12,400. I mean, does that mean that you have people come and visit you for, for a while or not? I mean, look, it's not, it's not for us to determine that, but we're not in the business of speculating what the problem is. It, but we're, what we're seeing is that there is usage, that the water is going through that meter. And so I, I don't have an awful lot of understanding why we would want to abate a charge that for all intents and purposes appears to be actual usage.
If, if I may speak on that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. G, there. I do see what, obviously, you're speaking of with a pattern and such. To me, what would make more sense on that is if the pattern were consistent, as obviously what you're looking at is obviously the 57 and then the 12,000 in 2021, and then again, and then again, the 5,000 and then 12,400 in 2023. But as you can see, those dates are different as well on both sides. One looks like it was more during, during the spring and summer timeframe, and then another one was more in the fall and winter timeframe there.
Yeah, there was no spring and summer in, in, there was no spring in either one of those.
If I'm not mistaken, the 8171, well, I'm sorry, you're, you're correct. I would say that's more summer. You're, you're correct. I was looking at the 6821, but it is actually 6821, I believe, to 817. If, if that's correct, Mrs. Brown? The 57 to, yeah, the 57.
So the charge for the 12,200 cubic feet covers the timeframe from June 8, 2021 through September 9, 2021.
Okay. And then the 5,700 usage, what is that time?
That would have been from March to June.
Okay, so the end of winter or, so, okay.
Through the water superintendent or the water department, how many water services do you have? Somewhere around 15,000?
9,800 plus.
9,800. And are you expected to give hourly readings back to, to people who have, have high usage at 2 o'clock in the morning? Or is this sort of an anomaly?
So I believe what he, the resident was talking about is being notified if they have high usage, which with these Neptune meters, we try our best every two months or so to send out letters to residents who end up on the high consumption list. If, if we weren't going through this right now, you would have received a letter stating that there was high consumption, you have a leak, contact us. So yes, we do notify the letters. It's not a daily thing. It's, you know, letters that we send out to all of the residents, hundreds of them at a time.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Gino, do you have any further questions?
No.
Take as much time as you want. I just wasn't sure if, if we lost you.
No, I'm, I am not lost. I don't believe at all.
Is there anything else to...
I guess, at some point in time, I would like to see if, if we're going to have a report that shows what the usage is and, and something that shows a balance as though it were the balance on the, on the account, that that be stated and we not get something that just indicates the charges and the total charges. I presume that this must go back decades, the balance.
That would be to the beginning of the property, right?
Yeah, it goes back to the beginning of the property. I was actually trying to simplify the reports. I know these reports can be very lengthy and a little confusing with all of everything that's on it. So I was just trying to simplify it by showing the charges and the usage. But we do have full reports. If you wanted one, I, I will absolutely get you one.
Well, perhaps properly labeling the columns might be helpful. I'm done.
Thank you. Well, I think we probably should. You know, I, so I'll take that as a recommendation. You know, one of the things that, and I'll be honest with you, I think that, that as far as missing the deadline, I feel less wrong about that. I think this is worth pursuing, making sure we're, you know, we, we kind of get to the bottom of it. If you do discover that, that you, you have a leak of some kind, which they can be very sneaky. They can, they can be very, very sneaky. They can, you know, you, you guys have seen it all, I'm sure. But, you know, under the ground, you know, you said you don't have irrigation, but that can sometimes trip people up. But honestly, every now and then, since doing these abatements hearings, if I'm in my house and I hear like, like you hear like water kind of running in the background, I just, I see the dollar bills, you know. And so I'm like, I used to never be conscious of this. And now when I hear it, I'm like, that's not supposed to be happening. And you go check the toilets and make sure that they're not leaking. It's, it's a very common reason for this, this to happen. And so I, I think, I would like to, I'll, I'll follow the advice of the board in this, but it would make sense to me to continue this, give you guys an opportunity to get a plumber to actually examine the property to see if they can identify a leak. And then we can have, you know, and if that's the case, as I read in the abatement policy, I'll read the sentence again, it's underlined, if a leak is confirmed, the customer may qualify for an abatement 50% of the water usage and 50% of the sewer usage. And they, they base that off of the average over two years. And I think that would, would, if, if that were to be the case, if you were able to determine that you had a leak, probably where we'd end up, something, something like that. So I want to offer you the opportunity to get that data and then we'll just continue this. I want to give you enough time to be able to do that. And I'm, I don't want, this, this shouldn't be a rush. It shouldn't be like, you know, you can't find a plumber in time. So I don't, I don't mind scheduling this for the next meeting in September, which is the 17th, I believe, next, it's Tuesday.
If you think that's enough time.
Yeah, only if that's enough time. Otherwise, we can move it to, and we can, we can move it a couple of times and just kind of schedule it tentatively for the 17th.
The 17th of September?
September.
Okay.
If you have difficulty finding a plumber, though, then the next meeting would be October 1st.
I would probably prefer October 1st.
October 1st. So we'll, we'll do that. We'll get in touch with you. Just keep in touch with us. And, and we will...
Get some information on the, what's old, so we know that.
Sorry, can you say it again?
What's old?
Yeah, just get a little bit of information about what's outstanding. It would be helpful. Interest and penalties would be helpful to know. And, and if you guys will, will work with us, I think we'll, we'll try to find, find equity here.
I, I think that's a fair assessment and I will greatly appreciate that from, from you guys and from the water department as well, in, in working with us on that.
Yeah, so I don't have the authority to do that by myself, so I want to hear if anybody has a motion. That was just my recommendation.
Yeah, continue, I'll make a motion that we continue the, the hearing to October 18. Is that it?
I think it was October 1st, right?
October 1st.
Yes, 1st.
In, in, for more information.
Second?
Okay, motion to continue to October 1st, made by Mr. Carrera, seconded by, sorry, Vice Chair Carrera, and seconded by, by Ms. Roberts. On the vote, Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Are there going to be any discussion of this?
Yes.
Well, yeah, sure. Let's, let's have some discussion. Sorry. What are your thoughts, Mr. Mr. Gino?
Well, I, I guess that, that we are asked to review a case that has come before us to abate the water and sewer bill. And I don't see anything that indicates that the water hasn't gone through the meter. I, I hear that the water department has led water going through the meter at 2 o'clock in the morning in the last few weeks, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe it's longer than a few weeks. And I see a, a pattern that would indicate that perhaps every couple of years, there seems to be a 17,000 dollar or 1,000 gallon blip in, in the, in the water use, over, over what normally would be 3,2500 to 3,500 or thereabouts, water use. But I don't see anything that, that indicates that, that, that there's abatement in, in this. I mean, if, if the... I'm wondering what, what I'm going to be able to see in a month. And, and I'm going to vote against the motion because of that.
Okay. Do they, Bill, have any further comments they'd like to make before we move on to the vote? Okay, seeing none. We have the, the vote, the, the motion made by Mr. Carrera, seconded by Ms. Roberts to continue to October 1st. Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gino?
No.
Did I vote yes? So vote three yes, one no. We're going to continue this hearing until October 1st. Give you guys a chance to, to get together the, the data that you need. And then obviously continue to work with, with Karen and Keith, our superintendent, to make sure that we're, if you, if you run into things where you can't get a plumber, like, let us know. We'll, we'll move it out. Whatever works for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Of course. Thank you so much. Have a great night. And thank you.
You too.
Mr. Anastasia, Ms. Brown. Okay. Next item on our agenda is a request for designation of a handicap parking space at 146 Perry Street. Sure. This is for Orlando Texera?
Yes.
There's a little button.
Press that, press that button right there. Yep, there you go.
Hello? I live here 27 years, 146 Perry Street, Stoughton. Is my turn many help me traducir English for me?
Yes, sir. So for anybody who may have not been able to hear it, Mr. Texera, Texera, we'll be using an interpreter to, to help continue on with this, with this, with this request. But thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
All yours.
Fui operado duas vezes ao coração. Tenho diabetes conforme o meu médico mencionou. Eu neste momento estou cansado, nervoso porque tenho problemas além de distância da minha casa para driveway. E meu quarto fica frente da street. E eu tenho problema com minha driveway. Meu vizinho tem um feno que dificulta entrada e saída do meu carro.
He said, he has a heart surgery twice, he has a problem walking long distance, he sleep on the second floor, he rather go to front of the house to get the car because the other side with driveways is too long. The doctor recommend him not, he has a problem breathing because the condition was hot. And on his back driveway, his neighbor put the fence two feet inside where he drives out of the car, he's got a problem get out of there. So he's wonder if he can get a handicap plate, yeah, plate. Because his doctors recommended that, if it's possible.
Thank you. Any, any, anything further?
I'm asking for a. What? I'm asking for a. Okay. Estou com o advogado a ver se meu neighbor retira o feno from my driveway.
He said he's got a turn to see if his neighbor would move the fence because it's looked, looked like it's crooked too. But I don't know the house diagram or, because the guy has claimed that that's his property with the fences, so I don't.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this. So there's a potential location for him to park closer, but it's, it's a neighbor's property or there's some question about whether or not it's a neighbor's property?
He thinks the way the guy put a fence on the last section of the fence, he kind of curved that inside the driveway. He think that's his property and the other guy think that's his property. So it's in the middle there.
Okay.
Eastment, eastment front of my garage, front, I have eastment.
This is, this is the document when he bought the house. It says, his driveway is eight feet wide, but the way the guy put a fence, on the end of the fence, he cheated two feet in to his property. This is when he first bought the house back in the nineties. For a. He asked me to ask you if you want to see the, the diagram of the house?
Uh, sure, yeah, that'd be helpful.
My garage, his face. His paper, his paper, my house, 27 years. Eastment, uh, eastment.
I see. Yeah, so there's, there's an, there's an encumbrance. I just want to share this with the other members of the board. So that's his driveway. And it's, it looks like it goes right across his driveway. You're the expert. So his driveway is on the right and his neighbor built a fence that comes right into his driveway, what he's doing right into his driveway. Yeah.
You.
I understand, I understand, thank you. Would you also like to see that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, feel free, feel free to sit, sit down and, and relax.
Standard Eastman?
Well, it's, it's a plot plan, but it's hard to read.
Was it? Yeah. So we, the members of the board who are present, sorry, Mr. Gino, we were able to look at some additional documents. One was a picture of, of Mr. Texera's driveway and the color of the pavement compared to his neighbor's pavement of their driveways contrasts. And his neighbor built a fence in what looks like it goes right into the driveway of Mr. Texera and cuts off a couple of feet, maybe two or three feet of, of that driveway. And there's an additional document on, about the property that I have no expertise in, in translating, but if Mr., or I guess Vice Chair Carrera, could you help us understand what that was, what the document was saying?
The, the sad part is, somebody's going to have to get a surveyor to make sure what's right or wrong there. And we got a recommendation from Sergeant O'Connor that says there is ample parking, if it's, something has to be cleared up. I don't understand why that fence was allowed to come into his property if it's his or if it isn't. It's, that's not for us to decide, so it's another thing where it's, it's something that they're going to have to clear up.
Yeah, yeah, so it's outside the scope of anything we can do about it.
Putting a parking spot in the street, it's not going to fix it because anybody could park there. It's not like designated and numbered like.
So I, I wanted to just ask, do you have any other, any additional comments that we'd like to, we will move on to Sergeant O'Connor in just a moment, but I want to make sure that I gave you plenty of opportunities to provide with your information.
Yeah, sobre parking. Si.
He wants to know what about parking in front of his house?
Yeah, that's, that's, we're going to speak with the, with the sergeant about that part.
Second reports. Eh, na lá minha casa. No parking. 146, no parking, 142, no parking.
So you can go put a, a, in between. In between the sign, you can put a parála.
No.
So in between those two signs, he cannot park. That's in front of his house.
Okay, so there's signs of, near, on your street that say no parking from here, here, this, we already there?
He cannot park in front of his house.
His, uh, house is between those two signs?
Yeah, he cannot park in there.
Thank you. So Sergeant O'Connor, help us understand, I know as soon as what was sent to us, my first request was to bring this to the police to do an evaluation and if you could just share with us your findings and your recommendation.
Thank you. Sergeant O'Connor, Stoughton Police. So when I got it, I went down there and definitely an issue with the driveway at the beginning out by Myrtle Street, but that's beyond my control. But it's definitely tight and it's kind of like, it goes up on one side as well. So that's an issue, but there was a car parked in the driveway back towards the house and that's where the photo came from that I provided. So I looked, the, that section of Perry Street on that side from Myrtle down to the apartments on the corner of Perry and School is, is listed as no parking. I don't know when that was done or why that was done. There is two hour parking on the opposite side of the street with cars there, it does become more narrow. Cars would have no problem getting through. If you try to have two cars coming in opposite directions, it's going to be close. So the other thing is, is I showed that there's, and part of the reason why I did this is like the doctor's letter said originally he had no driveway. And I was like, well, that's weird. So I went and checked, saw the driveway, it's about thirty to 35 feet, I used the town's GIS site to measure, I didn't measure it directly, from the driver's side door where I took the picture to the back, back door. The front, if he was allowed to park there, would be about 20, 23 feet, depending on how far over he parked. Not a huge difference, but a difference nonetheless. The other issue is if you, as the board decide to grant a handicap spot at that location, if someone else parks there, there's nothing we can do about it, you know what I mean? If someone else legally parks there, it wouldn't just be designated for Mr. Texera. So that would be another issue. The, like, one solution I would be opposed to would be removing the no parking, but I would be opposed to that at this point just because of the narrows, how it narrows the road. In my opinion, this, but this is probably more a board decision. It's probably not a good can of worms open up to keep creating personal parking spots for people because then everyone will want one, basically is how it will work, but, and I think that covers everything. So I oppose the personal handicap spot in front of the house at this point, based on all that information.
So there's one other person I would just like to hear from, I know we have a member of the Disabilities Commission present who I believe they were able to, they were, they considered this, this request as well. I'm not sure that, in what capacity, but I would love to hear what your thoughts are and any insights or recommendations you might have on this matter as well.
Sure. Charlotte Mullin, Chair of the Stoughton Disabilities Commission. Mr. Texera came before us several months ago, many months ago, and we felt that the request was certainly not within our purview and referred him to the police department, who in turn referred him to all of you. Certainly under the ADA laws, there is no provision for private parking designations along streets. The way it's handled generally is more in larger cities where people don't have driveways and don't have garages and direct access perhaps to their, their homes. So for instance, Boston has an application process, people can, you know, apply to have a handicap designation by their home. And as Sergeant O'Connor pointed out, it doesn't prevent someone else with a handicap placard from parking in that particular spot. So, you know, certainly it would be within the board's purview if, if you wanted to set a policy within the town, you know, for situations like this that could arise, but it typically is within more dense cities. And the recent public right of way access recommendations has no say or no mention on this kind of a situation. They talk about, for instance, parallel parking in a business district and things like that and having designated spots.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to open up to the board for questions, we'll start with Mr. Gino.
Yes, thank you very much. There, there is a white SUV parked in the parking, in the driveway of the area behind the house. And that driveway comes off of Myrtle Street. It obviously isn't hard for the, for the driver of that large SUV, white SUV, with a handicap parking sticker, by the way, on it, to get in and out of that driveway because when I was driving around there, I stopped and let the person come out and the person came right by me and I saw the handicap sticker on the windshield of the car. Also, at the same time, I saw the black car, which is in the front of the house on Perry Street with a handicap parking sticker on it. And it appears to be parking there quite frequently. I do not know whether Officer O'Connor... I do not know whether Officer O'Connor has any, anything to say about whether or not that car ever gets ticketed. I'm, I'm not sure, and I'm not really trying to get the car ticketed. But there are two vehicles apparently dealing with handicap signs on, on the cars. There are people on that same property, and it appears as though there is at least one, and maybe more residents, on that property. There's an extra home or office or something in the back. So I don't know where all of this is going, but I, those are my observations, and anyone who wants to chime in on that would be, be happy to hear them.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. To answer Mr. Gito's question, I have no idea if those cars have been ticketed in the past or not.
That, that's fine. I'm not, I'm not really trying to search that out. I just didn't know if that was a problem.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Knowing why we would be
I think Mr. Gito's still talking.
Two vehicles competing for apparently one state, one handicap parking space.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Sergeant O'Connor. So we have the responsibility of safety for all. My microphone went out, okay. You made a comment before that if two cars are coming down the street in opposite directions, that's a problem. So, did that, did my microphone keep going up? Thank you, thank you, Luke. That if a fire truck goes down that street and there's a car, then that won't work, even if a fire truck alone is going down that street. That street is very narrow. I tried going down that street, and it, and it is very narrow. But is that true? Is that a true statement regarding a fire truck going down there?
I, I believe that it would be true. I mean, they're just larger than the average vehicle, so it'd be even more stringent for them to get through with other traffic coming the other way.
Thank you for that confirmation. The other comment, even if we did go in the direction of providing handicap parking in front of the house, there's no guarantee, you've said it three times, Vice Chair Carrera said it a couple of times as well, there's no guarantee that that space would be limited to Mr. Texera.
That's 100% correct.
Parking in the back, in the third question, are there other options? So he's, he has limited parking area. He can't walk for long distances. There's no other option for him because at the end of the street, that would be a distance for him to walk. You know, I'm, I'm not a medical provider to aid, to think of aiding assistance. I just can't think of a way to be, to provide safety for Mr. Texera and safety for all that would be on the street.
Well, I think the option is for him to park in the back of the house. The distance is not so great that it should be a major issue. Again, I'm not a medical professional either.
Okay.
I mean, maybe 12 to 15 extra feet could be a major issue. I'm not sure. But I, I, my opinion, it's not.
Thank you very much. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera, Vice Chair Carrera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern about the whole thing is the liability, the liability to the town. We designate this spot, and, you know, something happens, and are they gonna come after us? Because we spot, like, it's a spot zone type thing where, where does it start from here? And I, I read your report, and I, and there is, there is one way out of it. If they have to put a driveway in the front of the house, it can go in at an angle, or they can go in straight. You just have to take a piece of that fence down and, and do something there to save the long walk. But I don't, I don't, I don't think I can just spot a spot in the street like that, and if somebody comes down, and God forbid, he's, he gets picked off. There's a lot of it happening in this town right now, and it's unfortunate. I wouldn't want to see him get hurt. At least if he's in on his own property and he gets out, he's a little safer.
Safer on the back of the house?
He could put a parking space where he's looking for the designated space. He could take a piece of fence down, and there's enough room to put a spot in there so that he's in on his own property. But if he doesn't want to walk from there, then he has to go in from the back. I just don't feel that, that it's safe for him on that street like that. A blue sign isn't gonna save his life.
Sorry, I wasn't able to hear you. What was the comment?
I check my doctor.
He says he wanna check with his doctor.
The doctor. Okay, so, sorry, Mr. Carrera, do you have any more questions? This is something that I would very much like to be able to do, but I don't, it's very difficult to find the way that this is gonna work out safely. I agree with the street narrowness. You know, we'll have, you'll have fire engines, you'll have plows, ambulances, trash on a weekly basis. There's gonna be a lot of big vehicles coming through here, and periodically throughout, throughout the week, and sometimes in less-than-ideal conditions. And the spot itself, A, it can't be secured, it can't be a personal spot, so it could be used by anyone. And that causes a problem. But also, it, so far as I'm aware, it will be the only handicap parking space in all of Stoughton in the middle of a street. And, and how do we, you know, monitor that? Like, even that spot itself, if you were to move or leave for one reason or another, we would just have a spot, there was a handicap spot on a, on a, a street. I'm not sure how we even track that necessarily, you know, where these might be. If we start adding more, it's something that would be very nice to be able to do, on the one hand. On the other hand, this is, this is really like an issue that the, is dealt with, at least in this particular community, by having parking lot, parking spaces, driveways. And in this case, the property does have one, it appears, and has one that's, that's accessible. I don't know how, how far a walk it is, but I don't, I'm concerned that this, that this might be really not some, sort of outside the scope of what we, we would be able to, to really be able to meaningfully help with. But I'm willing to hear other, other people's thoughts on it. I do want to give the applicant another chance. If you want to respond to anything you've heard or any of your thoughts, you know, you're welcome to, to share those as well.
I just explained what you said. In case, if you park, in case of emergency, a fire engine, ambulance, or cops is gonna interfere with whatever is there.
I apologize. My, my hearing is not very good. Could you just pull the mic forward? Because I couldn't, I couldn't make that sentence.
No, I said, I, I just explained to him what you were saying about
Oh, okay.
If you park in there, in front of the house, in case of an emergency, fire engine or ambulance or police, anything of emergency, it would be interfered with a car parking there. That's the.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I just wanted to.
So.
So I think we've.
But he said there's a, there's a post there, because I don't, I don't know the front of that. He says there's one post, he could park right against the post. I don't, I don't.
So our choices are to take no action, to, to make a recommendation to put this parking space in, to continue the hearing, or to simply deny the request. What is the will of the board? Does anybody have a motion that they'd like to make?
I say that we take no action. Motion to take no action.
Oh, and I will second that.
Okay. So there's a motion to take no action made by Vice Chair Carrera and seconded by Ms. Roberts. We'll give, give the board an opportunity for discussion. Does anybody have any additional points they'd like to make?
No.
Okay. Then on the vote, Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So as of right now, this isn't, this is something the board could take up at a future time potentially. We just chose to take no action. But there's nothing that we found that we can do right now to accommodate this, this request.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Mullin, for, for coming out so late and, and helping us out.
Thank you.
Okay. So I know the agenda said 8:40, and it's 10 o'clock. Apologies, but we got, we got a little jammed up at the front end of this meeting. So the, the next item is the Climate Action Plan Committee interim recommendations.
Thank you, everyone who's here, and Mr. Gito as well, and anybody else who was watching. Molly Cochrane, I'm Chair of the Climate Action Plan Committee.
I'm Rachel Lazarus. I am the Secretary of the Climate Action Plan Committee.
And we do thank you, and thank you for your time. And I'm good at going rapidly, so I will go rapidly. I realize it's quite late tonight, but I would also say it's a, it's a pretty important topic for us to focus on. I first want to thank you for giving us the time, and also thank you, quite frankly, for the town's support of Kathy Stanley, who is the town's Energy Manager, who is doing tremendous work, and hopefully that'll be a very long-term relationship. So as we make the presentation of our interim recommendations, I just want to say that, of course, the context and the reality of what we're dealing with is everything here. I'm sure you're all following the world events, and the news is inescapable. And I'm just reading from a site from Yale Climate Connections, July 2024 was Earth's warmest July since global record keeping began in 1850. Also, they also quoted them as saying, "The tally of U.S. billion-dollar weather disasters so far in 2024 has been 19." So as much as this is a public health issue, it's also an economic issue, and it's about investments, smart investments in our future. So just a really brief update as to where we are as a committee. As you may have known from town meeting, MAPC did award the grant, which was actually submitted in the spring of 2023. We have not heard back on the EEA grant. I did touch base with MAPC, who submitted that grant on our behalf. MAPC has given us a very sophisticated, I call it a questionnaire, call it a climate audit tool, which we are working hard. We've been working with James Conlin. We'll have to work with Kathy Stanley to fill all that out. And when we do, I will forward it to Mr. KB to share the select board. And it really shows, quite frankly, the sophistication of the approach by having professionals now on the scene working with us. So we're really happy about that. All right. Getting to the interim recommendations. So we began our work on the Climate Action Plan, really being inspired by and in accordance with something Kathy Stanley pointed out, that is Governor Baker's 2021 Executive Order 594. It's called "Leading by Example: Decarbonizing and Minimizing Environmental Impacts of State Government," unquote. So this is a sweeping set of measures from that executive order and programs to reduce fossil fuels, fuel use in state government. So inspired by that, our approach has been that the town government should also move with all deliberate speed to reduce its emissions, which has a twofold benefit of mitigating climate change, like everybody across the world and all, especially the developed nations should be trying to mitigate climate change. But also, when you reduce emissions, you have an immediate, right here in our town, effect of you are improving the air quality, you are improving health outcomes for people. So it's sort of like a two-for-one. And let me get right to the recommendations. And you can stop me at any time, or you can ask questions at the end, whatever is your preference. I tend to talk quickly, so I hope I'm not going too fast. Number one, very simple thing is that, and maybe this is a message that needs to be broader, because I, I've been told there's an option to get town warrants and the town annual report, just get it electronically. I was never aware that there was such an option. I think if that just promulgated a lot more, people can choose. There's not gonna be any, you know, the default is, of course, you can get your paper copy. Many people prefer that, and that's all fine. But I feel like you can sort of send a message, gee, this is a great way to save paper. It's also gonna save the town money and mailing costs and all that. So that would be a really good thing. And I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, in a few years, you know, half or more people just take it electronically. So that's point one. Point two, I'm actually gonna ask, I'm sorry, going too fast? I'm happy to do it one at a time. That might be a more organized way to do it, so if that works for you.
The only, the only thing I have a question about in here is if you want to promote an electronic option.
Yes.
I don't like the word "only," because I'm a paper guy. So if you want to have an option, and option's an option, but I don't like the word "only," like.
Like an electronic, just an electronic. I guess because it was an only option. In other words, you would be telling the town, you would have to act, actually come forward and tell the town, "I don't want a paper copy. I'm satisfied with having the electronic only option." And I totally do respect the thing about paper. I'm a lawyer. We use a lot of paper, unfortunately. So it's for people who are comfortable with it, they're, they're, and you're saving by, you don't have to say, send out 150, maybe you send out 95. Or maybe in a few years, you send out. out 65. So in other words, you would affirmatively say to people, or somebody would have to affirmatively step forward and say, I am happy with the electronic only, I don't want a paper copy.
I would say that all, I would say all of our recommendations have been designed to be as frictionless as possible for the people of Stodden. We are trying to cut costs whenever possible. We are trying to do this in the most efficient manner, both energy-wise and economically-wise, which happily tend to dovetail in this situation. So I would second this. I would say it would be an opt-in option. Maybe you send all the town member representatives in their information, asking them to confirm that they want to receive a paper copy, or confirm that they would only like to receive an electronic copy. This would not actually significantly decrease or increase any kind of effort, and eventually, as Molly said, people would be, are probably going to be more likely to shift to electronic reader, bring a PDF reader, or Kindle or something that can review it much more quickly and in larger font.
I'd just like to jump in real quickly. I love electronic only, and I know you love paper only, and sometimes he embarrasses me because I can't find something he's able to hand it to me, which happens all the time. But at the same time, we all have our own thing. But for me, with the warrants, you know, I receive it, I see the posters, it's like 13 bucks, and I put it immediately into the recycle bin. I never use it. I, town meeting, I have two versions of the warrant open at all times, and that's how I operate. So, and I would love to be able to ask, and in fact, I have asked in the past, like, don't even bother sending it to me. But there's really no, like, controls for that. It's just if somebody remembers not to put, you know, send it in the mail.
A lot of what we are suggesting, and a lot of very climate-friendly options in general, are things that are just a slight adjustment, and makes things actually more efficient, more practical. I personally actually do like getting paper copies, because I like marking things up. But as PDF readers improve, I can now mark things up on my PDF reader. And I also, I love finding things very quickly on paper, but the search function is actually getting better for PDFs, so...
Well, I'm going to tell you something. I see a lot of people flinging through those things like this, and they go right by it, and I just roll the paper to the side. I'm a paper guy.
And if they have the PDF open, they can also have Candy Crush open, so...
So, yeah, I'm personally a fan of it. That's how I just like to operate, carry as few things as possible. Also, at least we're seeing it front, but it's hard to have a lot of stuff out, out in paper. But, so just to reiterate, the idea is that for yourself, you're saying that I only want the electronic version of it, but it defaults to paper version?
I believe that's the way we should do it.
Yeah, I think that is far more comfortable for the people who would prefer a paper option. Eventually, it may be that things shift, and the town will want to shift to electronic-only as the default, but I don't think we're there yet, and I don't think we need to rush there.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Ms. Roberts.
I was very much interested in all, how many recommendations were there? Eight, total of eight recommendations.
And we're going to go through each one, but quickly, yes.
Are you going to go through each one?
Yes, I'm going to go through each one, yes. I do want to touch base on each one.
Because that's what I was going to ask you in the essence of time. Did you have a priority list, like the top five, since you provided all eight? But I was really interested in number three, about the electronic infrastructure. But no, go ahead and do your original presentation, and I'll get to it.
I was going to ask Lou also if he has any questions about just number one.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
But otherwise, I think it might be good just to give you guys the opportunity to go through all.
Okay, we'll go through them all, and then we'll take questions.
Lou, just if Mr. Gito has any questions about number one.
I have no questions about number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, or eight, or the proposed resolution.
Perfect, okay. Thank you very much for that. Yes, so just in the interest of time, I want you guys to be able to speak and not be sort of slowed down by us.
All right. So number two, I'll actually ask Rachel to speak, because she was the one who actually made this discovery about this law.
Yeah, so very early on in the process, we were looking through possibilities. We have a giant Google Doc with lots of different things that were suggested in different towns, things that might work for Stodden, things that might not work. And as I was looking through it, I saw that there is actually a Massachusetts anti-idling law, I don't know how to read those long things, so I won't, where it is actually the law in Massachusetts that you cannot idle your car for longer than five minutes. There are some exceptions when it comes to, like, if you are freezing to death in your car, or if you are overheated in your car, since air conditioning is very important, given climate change, you can obviously run it in a life-or-death situation. But if you are, for example, as I often am, waiting in line to pick up your child, you do not need to, and the school opens at 2:40, it is actually better for your car not to leave it running from 2:30 to 2:45 when your child gets out. Cars nowadays are designed differently, designed far more efficiently than they used to be. And so the old device, the old advice of you have to leave your car running for 15 minutes before turning it off or whatever, doesn't actually apply anymore to most vehicles, including my own. And also, this would be an immediate decrease in the air pollution around, around school properties specifically, and also probably the commuter stations, the other area where I think there is a lot of idling going on. The Massachusetts Department of Energy actually has a very thorough guide for how we can implement this policy in a way that would be as smooth as possible. We have spoken to Dr. Beida about this, and he also had some great solutions about, or suggestions about implementing this at all of the elementary schools at the same time, for example. And again, this is a misdemeanor, I believe, and there is a fine of up to $500 if you are found idling for longer than five minutes. And this is frankly the law, it is a good law, and it is one of those things that people don't observe, and one of those things that we can make the shift in our lives by thinking very concretely about this air pollution, by making your default opt-in electronic, opt-in to turning your car off, letting it rest for a little bit, getting outside your car for a little bit maybe, because it's often a very beautiful day outside. And so this is one of those things where you can probably accomplish quite a bit by just putting some signs up at elementary schools or other places where the idling is very prominent, just saying, just reminding people this is the law. You can put up bumper stickers, you can put up signs on the Department of Transportation billboard, which has, and other things that have lots of very good information, you can put up an anti-idling thing there. Excuse me. And you can also work with PTAs, work with different places in order to bring this up. It's a nudge in a lot of ways. And also SMAC was the other thing I was thinking of before I coughed. Like, to put up a message at SMAC, just like a little billboard, "By the way, like, you should only idle your car for five minutes or less, it's better for your car, it's better for the environment, don't break the law." Like, just a simple message, and I would be happy to discuss it further with anyone. But it's, sometimes you need your leaders to take the first step in making it an official policy.
Right. And I would just say, we worded this very carefully, we don't want people running around giving serious tickets to people, or at least not in the next few years. We want just to raise awareness and have, you know, even the police be aware of it, and maybe they speak to somebody from time to time, and maybe, you know, they remind, and again, Dr. Beida's on board, it's really a matter of, the Sustainability Committee is working on this issue as well, it's really a matter of getting the signs and getting the signs placed, so...
It's getting everyone on the same page.
Yeah, yes, getting the schools and the town on the same page. All right, moving on to the next one, which is actually going to be very quick. I mean, obviously, we want to, as it's feasible, gradually move to more electric vehicles in town, which requires to have the infrastructure there. I spoke with Kathy Stanley, this is really something Kathy Stanley's going to take the lead on, we're not expecting the select board, the town manager, to go out and take care of that, but it's to support Kathy Stanley's actions on it. And apparently, both the, you know, the technical issues and the financial issues behind this kind of like changed from one year to the next, but she's absolutely on top of it. So it's asking for the town's support, and asking for the town to be open-minded about taking a look at electric vehicles as it makes these purchases. And I have a long list, there's about 15 towns in Massachusetts who have some police cars that are, again, they may just start with a couple, so let me move on. Next one is very simple and cost-free. The threshold really to getting people to make their households much more energy-efficient is having Mass Save, Mass Save, come to your house and do an energy audit. So to have Mass Save come to any kind of town event, they have their employees, they come, they table, they explain what they do, it's a free energy audit, and that's really what can get somebody, you know, really changing their carbon footprint as far as their household. One of the events I think Mass Save should be at is just outside-of-town meetings. So, you know, for the first half hour, as people show up, they can talk to people, get names, say and out literature, maybe people can sign up. Again, it's just promoting, we want people to take this step in their households. Next, this one is really, it's about recycling receptacles next to trashcans, which many towns and cities have. Most recently, I was in Needham, and there they are, literally side by side. And I think that, so wherever we have town trashcans, there should also be town recycling cans that are, you know, very well describing what they accept, so it's clear. And I think that that's a really important message, and I will have to apologize here, but I do have a quote on, that relates to that, and also to the composting, which is the next item, which I know the town actually is starting to promote, just from the Boston Globe this week, and it said, "More than 290 of the state's landfills have closed due to overcapacity. The state now ships 20% of its trash out of state. Those that remain open are poised to close by 2030 because they will also be full." So it's time for this sort of cultural shift, where people compost wherever possible, and they recycle 100%, so let's, as a town, start having those receptacles, not just at town offices, and, you know, in people's office, like most office places do, but also any town event, the town parks, et cetera, et cetera. Next, again, weaving in the recycling issue, this town does a great job of the recycling opportunity. I moved here 20 years ago, and it was great. Just go get your bin, and they pick up recycling there, so it's always been very supportive. Why is it in 2024, the school system still does not recycle? So it's not, I understand there's like this divide, there's the school in its budget, and the town in its budget. I don't understand why there isn't kind of some kind of, I would call it a summit, or a master plan, where there's kind of some kind of sharing of information, and maybe going forward, some kind of a plan sharing, so that the schools can also recycle, and then composting is separate, and we are, and the Sustainability Committee is working, you know, to talk to the schools about that with Black Earth Compost. So again, I think that, I think the schools need to get up to speed with the town here, but I think the town's sharing of information, and maybe having some type of joint plan as to how the town, as a whole town, can do recycling in an economic way. And then the last thing was about, before we get to the resolution, was about, again, promoting, you know, safe streets, safe sidewalks, safe bikeways. And one of the public events that we did, I was very happy to see that, oh, there's a new young person here, and he was a biker. And he basically came to give us the message, I really want to make sure that you can make Stodden safe for biking, so I think it's an important message to pass along. And then, as far as the resolution, which you have before you, I will not read through it, I'm happy to answer questions about it. The point of the resolution is obviously, so we talked about leading by example, but the whole point of leading by example is that people need to follow you. So the people who need to follow you are the businesses in town and the residents in town. MAPC quoted to us that as far as any town's energy usage and its emissions, the town government itself is like a single-digit, so in other words, 10% or less. It's all the other thousands of houses and households we have in the town. So this is just a resolution trying to promote awareness, education, choices, and some of those choices are like choices where there's rebates, and there's tax subsidies, and all this sort of carrots that the government is giving us, state and federal, to make these changes. So that is the point of the resolution, obviously happy for anybody to, you know, look at it or change the wording, but it's about promote, it's about promoting these choices, and we would be happy to, as opposed to just say, well, you go do it, to the Climate Action Plan Committee, and then in the future, the Sustainability Committee in the long-term future, help with the messaging. And I understand that the town now has a new sort of a PR or communications person that was approved at town meeting. That person, and again, this is not, ownership, this is not going to be a huge job for anybody, but maybe working with us a little about the messaging on the different ways that the town does have, you know, the town cry, or the TVs, the DPW sign, Facebook or whatever it is, and maybe, again, working with MAPC, with some ideas from them of, you know, what's a good way to do messaging, you know, and it's not like throwing 10 things at people all at once. Maybe in one month or one season, we talk about this issue, and another season, we talk about that issue. But then, a lot of people just need the prompting, because we all are so super busy, and there's just the reality of inertia. So meanwhile, you know, climate change is getting more alarming by every day. So if we can give some people some little reminders or prompts, or tell them where to turn to, you know, go see Mass Save at dot-dot-dot, you know, you can give the website, where you can find out about solar panels, or you can find out about a licensed heat pump contractor. We would love for the town to help with that promotion, so that is the thought.
I would just want to say that, again, I want to stress that we want to make this as frictionless as possible. We know that some people like to stay in the way that they are, and what we want to do is present maybe an easier option. There have been people bringing up that the recycling program is great, they don't know how to get the recycling bin, and so there's this step involved. And so one of the ways that we can, one of the things that MAPC, I think, is especially going to help us with, is they are going to be, and this is the value-added of having MAPC come to us, as opposed to just, you know, copying off of Canton's plan or whatever, which we shouldn't do, is that we're going to be building relationships through all of these different communities, businesses, nonprofits, organizations in the town. We want to see what is working right now, we want to help ease our way into making it better and more efficient. Right now, there is money on the table, it will never be cheaper to convert to solar energy or more energy-efficient things than it is right now, it is always cheaper to build now, than in some future time. And also, it's just, it is very easy to make something frictionless. And also, I do want to say, a lot of people are very gloom and doom, climate change is very scary. We are working, we are improving. The emissions has gone down from 2 degrees to 1.5 degrees. Like, we are really, actually, as a planet, all of humanity is working together, and we are making vast strides. A lot of people think that climate change is immediately going to be this tragedy. We're thinking about climate resilience. We know that things are getting warmer here, heat pumps are so efficient in the summer. My house was very cool during these very hot and humid days. I personally am putting my money where my mouth is in getting a heat pump, in signing up with Black Earth Compost. I'm not asking anyone to do anything that I wouldn't do myself. And honestly, I really do think, I am far more optimistic about the earth, the earth's future than I was four years ago. And part of that is due to people like Molly, working at every single level to make the world a better place, and to make the world more efficient, more effective, cheaper for us to run, and also sustainable in the long term. I just saw something today about how the amount of solar panels that have been built in just the last year alone have been vastly exceeded what the prediction was, all around the world. So we are, we don't want to be caught, being the last 10% of people, sticking to fossil fuels, sticking to inefficient heating pumps or heat boilers, when it will be more expensive to fix them, and worse for the environment at the same time. So this is really an opportunity for Stodden to lead, for Stodden to gradually make this change in a very efficient and effective way, and I'm really proud to be part of this committee. And thank you all so much for being awake at this hour. I have small children, I'm usually not.
Everything that you say was so interesting, and you presented it in a way that was so energizing, so thank you so much.
I run on solar power, which is why I'm tired now.
Okay, so thank you very much, first of all, thank you very much for all of this. I agree that this might sound counterintuitive, but the proclamation, for example, doesn't have sort of a very measurable request, right, where we're trying to do this in, you know, 10% in two years.
This is something that, oh, sorry.
Yeah, just finish. I actually, I like the fact that this is a light touch, but it sort of cracks the door open, and I think it's something that I personally appreciate. I think there's a lot of people who are concerned that this can be a heavy lift. And if, honestly, the proclamation itself, you know, I think we're like already doing this, so...
Some of it you came up with while we were composing it, the compost and the anti-idling were going to be big things, and then all of a sudden, Black Earth is here, and my compost is picked up on Monday.
Yeah, and, but at the same time that we're doing it, it's just reaffirming, like, actually, like, this is something we do care about, and, you know, we should just remind ourselves that this is something that matters. I definitely want the other members of the board to speak, so I won't, but I'll move on to some of the other folks. We'll start with Mr. Gito. I know you said you had no questions, but I just want to make sure you're still okay, if there's any comments you want to make.
Yes, I would like to approve all of the recommendations, the eight of them, and approve the proposed board resolution.
And I will second that.
Yeah, oh, definitely, definitely. On number seven, Molly, I, I think that's, that might be, I'll use the word aggressive, because the schools, to, in order for them to compost and stuff like that, they have to move the waste off-site. They don't, you got what they call foodborne illness, kids, if they get in.
Black Earth Compost does serve schools in Massachusetts.
I know, but we, we can't even put buses on the road, and we're going to hire people to walk around and do it. I just think that might be a little aggressive, you could talk to them, but I know.
I, I mean, I know that Dr. Bietta, we've, we've spoken with him, and he is very enthusiastic about looking into ways for this. MAPC, before, they're the people who told me specifically not to worry about metrics so much as the actual act of doing things. I'm confident that we can find a cost-effective way for the school to do composting, should it be a priority, we want it to be a priority.
And maybe it's a two-step thing, maybe it's, you just start, they start with recycling, and like, okay, so the town, since it's recycling away, why can't we send our, you know, why can't we participate in that? And again, maybe it's not this year, maybe it's a two- or three-year plan. But it's just, it doesn't make sense, quite frankly, that the schools are so far behind.
That's a, that's a good idea, to start with recycling, and then lean towards the other.
We want to have the agenda clear, we want to make sure that we're not just saying things and then letting them be dangled. This is something that we want to have the town prioritize, the schools prioritize, and everyone wants it prioritized. So we're just giving that nudge here.
Many of the, so, I've worked, mostly I've worked at large companies, and over the last 15 years, industries, this is what they do. You no longer, at your desk, you no longer have a trashcan. There's always a bunch of containers, and it's recycling, trash, compost, everywhere, all over the offices. It's, it's actually cheaper for them to do that than it is for everybody to just throw everything into waste bins, and for them to move it all around. So there's like, actually, a pretty strong economic argument that moving this way is beneficial, it actually would be cheaper to operate. But, you know, definitely let people crunch the numbers on that. Ms. Roberts, do you have any other, additional comments or concerns?
No additional comments or questions.
So I definitely, I'm ready to move forward on a vote for this, there was a motion by Mr. Gito, seconded by, by Ms. Roberts. I just do want to add that many of the specific recommendations, to me at least, sound like not so much policy decisions, but operational decisions. And so, so it's something that we, I feel like, maybe not that we would, we could, we could vote to bring these forward to the town manager, to develop a plan to, to do these. But I, like, these aren't necessarily things that we would be doing, in my view. It's, it's a, maybe not an important distinction.
It's more of a statement of priorities.
Yeah, just that these are, these are things that we would like the town manager to, to start exploring.
And we are in contact with the town manager as well, for the things that are in his domain.
Excellent. I'm not going to ask that the motion be changed or anything like that, I think that's just how practically it probably would work out. But we'd bring this to, to, to him, and also to the superintendent and the school committee, and work with them to, to implement a lot of these programs. So the motion was to, to, I want to make sure I get the language right, but, but you were, motion to adopt these recommendations and, and the proclamation, a proposed resolution, seconded by, made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Ms. Roberts. On the vote, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. I thank you very much for your hard work on this, and also for your, your, just, respect for the fact that this, that this is sometimes a more controversial subject than it could be. I think you've handled it very delicately, and I think also very respectfully. And I think that, you know, you've, this is an excellent, excellent first step.
I think when people actually hear what our proposals are, as opposed to the fears they have of our proposals, no one is going to be transforming Town Hall into some futuristic city of flying cars, it's not going to look like the Jetsons. What we're going to do is basically look at the priorities the town already has, and make it as climate-efficient as possible, which is also going to be as cheap as possible for decades to come. We are going to be saving the town a lot of money that we can use on the many other things that this town needs and deserves.
Well, thank you very much, each and every one of you for your support, it really means a lot to the committee, they'll be very excited, they'll bring the news back to MAPC as well, and they'll be excited, and we look forward to working with you, and with the town manager on these issues in the future. And also, thank you to everyone, and to you, Mr. Gito as well, as when you come here and you witness really the very, very hard work that each, that all of you do, and how respectful you are to everybody who comes before you, and patient, I really admire that, because it's a lot, it's a lot of work. So thank you so much for what you do for the town.
I don't always have that patience, I strive to cultivate it. Thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, so we have a couple of items on our consent agenda, consent agenda item. A is approval of open session minute, meeting, minutes, meeting of August 20th, 2024, and an application for parade, this is the, the holiday parade of lights on December 14th, 2024, by the Stoughton Recreation Department. And I'd like to just praise them for being so far out in front. Yeah, I know, I know, but better earlier than late.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Ms., seconded by Ms. Roberts.
The only thing I'll do, Mr. KB, is abstain from the minutes, because I wasn't here.
Perfect, so we'll, we'll take, we'll take these as two votes, but for the, for the open, eight, open session minutes, there's a motion to approve those, seconded by Ms. Roberts. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Uh, sorry, Vice Chair Carrera?
I'll abstain.
Abstain, I vote yes. And the, and the motion made by Mr. Gito to approve the parade, and seconded by Ms. Roberts, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And if anybody has a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Made by Mr. Gito, seconded by Mr. Carrera, Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?